Good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, May 1st, 2018, and we will now begin the Compton City Council meeting. If you could all please stand for a moment of silence and a Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Let us begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Councilperson Zarita.
Here.
Galvin McCoy.
Here.
Sharif.
Here.
Mayor Brown.
Here. We have a presentation on tonight under our committatory resolutions presented by Councilwoman Tana McCoy for the illustrious Top Ladies of Distinction. May our colleagues please join us on the floor? Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have the Top Ladies of Distinction please join me on the floor? We came down to join you. It is a pleasure to join you guys. So, I know most of the ladies from either the community or from just the Commission for Women. Thank you. Come on in. Just in time. Okay, okay. So, it was my pleasure to do this commendation and recognition of the Top Ladies of Distinction. And through the years, you ladies have accomplished so much. You've done so much in the community. You've been a pillar in the community of just doing community service. And I remember back in my Commission for Women days how active you were. You would be on the Commission and you would run and you combined all of the agencies. And so, we appreciate that because we are one and we have to combine the agencies in order to accomplish something. So, it is my distinct pleasure to present this proclamation to the Top Ladies of Distinction Incorporated, Hub City Chapter, and Top Teens of America. Whereas, the Top Ladies of Distinction Incorporated is a national nonprofit educational humanitarian organization that was chartered September 8th, 1964 by eight founding members in Tyler, Texas, and on June 1st, 1986 was chartered in the city of Compton, California by organizer Mrs. Margaret Reed and the 14 charter members. And whereas, it was envisioned by the Hub City Chapter as an opportunity to provide services, pride, and a sense of community connection by working collaboratively with other community organizations such as the National Council of Negro Women, the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, and the United Negro College Fund. And whereas, the Hub City Chapter of the Top Ladies of Distinction has been comprised of a group of distinguished and respected women from the city of Compton throughout Los Angeles who received a call for public service and answered and continues to be of service to this community, bringing together talented, energized, and skilled women of color in a collaborative effort to help alleviate the moral and social problems confronting our youth. And whereas, the Hub City Chapter of the Top Ladies of Distinction organized and expanded its objective to include its focus on our youth and therefore formed the Top Teens of America, Hub City Chapter. And the Top Teens embraced all of the moral qualities of the Top Ladies of Distinction, and they too participate in many community activities such as peer education workshops, financial literacy, and college planning workshops, anti-bullying workshops, just to name a few. And whereas, the Hub City Chapter of the Top Ladies of Distinction and Top Teens continue to remain passionate and dedicated to aiding and uplifting our community and stand strong to the motto, "Serving Youth and Adults." Now therefore, the Mayor of the city of Compton, Asia Brown, and the Compton City Council members do hereby proclaim May 1st, 2018 as Top Ladies of Distinction Incorporated, Hub City Chapter, Top Teens of America Day in the city of Compton and urge our 98,000-plus citizenry to pause to honor this outstanding humanitarian organization for their dedication to improving the lives of many. And it's proclaimed the first day of May by Mayor Asia Brown, Councilwoman Janice Zarita, Councilman Isaac Galvin, myself, Tana McCoy, and Councilwoman Emma Sharif. We thank you and we salute you.
I would like to thank the city of Compton Council for this great honor. And I want to thank all the members who have supported and are still supporting the Hub City Chapter. And I'm still trying to hang in there. Okay. And thank you so much.
Any of the other ladies, would you like to say something?
I'd just like to say thank you so very much to the city of Compton, Councilwoman McCoy. Thank you so much for thinking of us. I'm also going to say thank you to Mayor Brown and all City Councilpersons. Our sister, Kim Delay, made a recommendation that we be recognized for the work that we do. We kind of work behind the scenes here and enjoy what we do to enhance the city, the people of Compton. We love you. Thank you.
I'd just like to thank all of you lovely distinguished ladies for your service to the Compton community and beyond. We all stand on your shoulders and the Bible charges us to give honor to whom honor is due. And so, on today, it is my pleasure and honor to stand with my colleagues to salute you for the work that you do. God bless you all.
Well, it's truly an honor to stand amongst you young ladies as most of you I've grown up with. And I learned something today, Ms. Reed. I didn't know you was one of the original founders. I'm sorry. Not to details, huh? Chalk it, chalk it to my age. But it's truly, it's truly an honor and I'm glad Councilwoman McCoy brought you all here to recognize you. And it's, I mean, it's an honor to see you all looking so well and it makes me say like, I gotta do something right because I got a long way to go.
Our first Vice President Lady, Levon Spicer Moore is here. And our second Vice President, Lady Charmaine Hayes. Just wanted to let you know who some of our officers are. Oh, our most important person, our Top Teen Advisor, Lady Nakia Theory.
Tell them if you have some teens, give them the age.
If you have any teens aged 13 to 17, we welcome you into Top Teens, Hub City Chapter.
Let me say congratulations to each of you for all the work that you guys have done throughout the years for the citizens here, for the youth that's here, and for just being here and just working. As the mayor said, we all stand on your shoulders and you are to be commended for the work that you continue to do in this city and we certainly appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Yes, you're welcome. Okay, hold on, hold on. Kim is taking a picture. Thank you, ladies, for your service.
Thank you all for joining in with us to recognize the Top Ladies of Distinction. We will now move forward with public comments on agenda. We will now move forward with public comments on agenda items and non-agenda matters. The first speaker of the evening is Mr. Robert Ray.
Thank you, Robert Ray Compton. I want to start out with some thank yous. And a couple of them I actually forgot from last week. I want to start out by saying, Marjorie Schipp, Stacy Barnes, and our Compton firefighters, thank you for coming out and helping to install those eight-hundred-and-sixty-three smoke alarms. That was a great job we did a couple of weeks ago. And my next thank you is going to be to the Volunteers of America. One of my jobs as a caseworker for the Red Cross is trying to find housing for people who have been displaced by home fires. And it is not an easy job. And a couple of weeks ago, we had a fire right here in Compton. Couple of ladies were displaced. One of them is eight months pregnant. And thanks to referral to Volunteers of America, these ladies now have a safe place to stay. Item number three. If we don't budget for special elections, why don't we just stop having them? We don't need them. And lastly, I have been asking for the longest time to get some information on our successor agency properties. No one ever gave me an answer. So, I took it on myself. I called Jaime Brooks, C-B-R-E. And I'm not going to spill all the beans, but there is some works in progress for one of our properties. But, Mr. Brooks has said he would be more than happy to come to a council meeting and give the public an update of what he's doing. And our regular city manager is not here, but I would hope that he would invite Mr. Brooks to a council meeting or a successor agency meeting so that he can inform the public of what's coming up down the pipe with some of our agency properties. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Alvin Alabama Levitt.
I'd like to say to the Mayor Brown, the council, and in behalf of the citizens of Compton, I'd just like to say thank you for having an opportunity to be of service. I worked with Car Pros Kia Carson and back in 'oh-five, Car Pros Kia moved to Carson. And at that time, there was no car dealerships in the city of Compton. So, many of the people who bought automobiles in our city took their dollars to the city of Carson. So, I felt that as a citizen of Compton, where I live, I wanted to bring something back to the city and it's changed. And so, I developed what was called the Compton Alabama Discount Plan for naming it after the state of which I'm named after and the city, which is Compton. And so, in, in years as it progressed, we began to work closely with the, the Compton Business Chamber of Commerce. And so, we got quite a bit of assistance through Mr. Hollyfield and those other business people. So, what we tried to do at Car Pros as, and I as an individual, to make an effort to give back to the city of Compton. And in the process, we've been able to do so many things. And I'd just like to mention a few. We've worked with, and every, some of what we've done was publicly known and quite a bit of it was privately known. Initially, we set up a fund with the city so that when I sold a car, a donation of $100 was put into a fund here in the city of Compton. That was back in 2007. And so, we made some contributions to help in a number of ways. Particularly, one of our first projects was to send Joey Davis to Harlem. And later, you perhaps know the story of Joey Davis. He became one of a college student who never lost a fight and then now he's a professional. And then, we did some work with the Compton Airport to help fund the, the young people who flew the airplanes in the city of Compton and across the country. We've worked with community organizations in giving donations. We've helped with many of the schools within Compton in helping through Car Pros Kia. Also, the Thanksgiving events, the gospel concerts that we once had here in Compton. We worked with emergency disaster preparation, homelessness and, and the poor, youth sporting programs. We've worked with Compton College. And but, one of the most notable things that we've done in recent years is we made a donation to, of a car to the Black AIDS Institute. Since HIV/AIDS is rampant. And when we first started, it was said that Compton was the murder capital of the United States as a city. And so, it was such a negative thing that we wanted to do something that would make it positive in Compton. So, in working with the Black AIDS Institute, we've done one of the largest HIV awareness campaigns that has taken place in recent years in Southern California. And we always focused at Compton, the city of Compton. And we've actually had a winner of a car from the city of Compton. And we're doing extensive HIV testing throughout perhaps about twenty cities in the surrounding area. So, the benefit of what we do for citizens is to discount the cars that the citizens, the employees of the city purchase to help stimulate more dollars in their cash flow for their homes. And I just wanted to take this time to say thank you, Compton, for supporting Alabama and making Compton a better place. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. David Irons.
David Irons, resident of Compton. I'm going to donate $100 to the YAL because they teaching children out of box. I was bullied as a child, but I fought back. Then the bully stopped messing with me. But you need to learn how to defend yourself. If I had more money to give, I would. So, I told Reggie, Officer Reggie, that I would tell at this meeting so he won't think I'm giving him a bribe. Anyway, I really don't have too much to say tonight. But that water thing is a problem. I don't know why they say the water is cheap, but we drink purified water. It used to be pure, then they refied it. So, you say we need to re, what's the word you use for the water?
Reclaim the water.
Reclaim. It's basically the same thing, it's just a different word. Purified water is purified. Trying to make it pure again. And I designed this place, as people know, I, I do floor plans and stuff. There's a place called Sequoia Water Company in Compton on 134th and Palmer Lee. They had five different labels of water, the same container, but they had five different labels of water. And they had a food for less tractor trailer in the back. So, they loading up Compton water calling it. Then you go over here, Glacier Water is coming out the faucet too. This water is purified. It wouldn't, if, if it wasn't, I don't, re mean refied. I don't know what the fiied mean, but, you know, people need to listen, some of this medicine and stuff that people are taking, they killing us. My sister passed away. She was against marijuana, but she was on them opiates. And I wasn't really sorry that she died. I was angry because they kept giving her prescription medicine. Stuff they were testing. So many people dying from opiates and people are complaining about people that smoke marijuana. You need to check out, check why they don't want marijuana. Marijuana became illegal in 1939 because of, what's that newspaper guy, Hertz? He put bad press on marijuana. So, because he had a newspaper, they could make anything out of marijuana.
Thank you, Mr. Irons. Ms. Norchelle Brown.
Greetings, city of Compton. Greetings, city of Compton. My name is Norchelle Brown. I am the Policy Assistant with Congresswoman Annette Berrigan. I'm here to again, let you guys know that we are having a water quality town hall. Tomorrow, 6:00 PM to 7:30 at George Washington Elementary School. It's located at 1421 North Wilmington in Compton. We are expecting representatives from the U.S. EPA, the State Water Resources Board, and more. We will also have translation available. Thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Al Sanders.
Good afternoon, council and public. I'm Al Sanders, fourth district resident. I'm here today to give a couple of shout-outs to things I attended this past weekend. And the first thing I attended was the 150th year celebration of the oldest church in Compton, which is First United Church. Our councilwoman from the fourth district is a member there. And a very joyous celebration. It's Compton's oldest church, 150 years. And then, secondly, our Historical Society hosted a speaker series. Guest speaker was the Honorable Walter Tucker III. That was this past Saturday at the Compton Library. And that was a very joyous event. I have a few things I'd like to have the folks to say the date on. The first would be May the 10th. The Compton Youth Baseball is having a grand opening and that's at Gonzalez Park. And that's May the 10th. May the 11th, there's a seniors' Mother's Day celebration to be held at Dollar Hyde Community Center. I'm not sure the time, so you can check with Dollar Hyde Center for that opening ceremony time. And then, May 12th, your Compton Historical Society is having two bus tours throughout the city of Compton, California. First starting at 11:00 to 1:30. And the second, 2:00 to about 3:00 PM. So, and those will be departing from the Dollar Hyde Community Center on May the 12th. And then, lastly, the National Seniors Health and Fitness Day, May 30th. And that will be, I believe, hosted by the Dollar Hyde Community Center. So, again, I'm one of the executive board members for the Compton Historical Society. And our email is Compton125@yahoo.com. And Facebook, you can find us at Facebook, Compton125project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Matthew Brock.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me the time, three minutes, Mayor, City Council. My name is Matthew. I'm with E1. For those of you that have not heard, E1 is a fire manufacturer. We're, I'm here on behalf of-
I can hear you.
I'm here on the behalf of the recent fire apparatus bid that took place in the last couple of months. I just had a couple bullet points that we wanted to address and get on the record to see if we can possibly get some more clarification in the future. One is surrounding that bid and the lowest bidder. For those of you that don't know, it was E1 spec that was used to, to, to actually bid on this particular item. We were not only the lowest bidder, but we had the least amount of exceptions on that spec. And furthermore, the, the person or the company that it was awarded to, the amount that was used was actually said to me by the chief deputy city clerk that it was supposed to be stricken from the quote. So, we're trying to get a better perspective on where that was coming from and sort of, not only to address it or necessarily protest it, but to get a better perspective when we do bid of how this is done in the future in the city of Compton so we can better align ourselves with your guys' agenda. Obviously, our, our focus was a little more intense, intentional in this particular instance. One of our representatives was an ex-city chief. So, we got really deep, ex-city chief for the fire department. So, we got really deep in our discounts to hopefully save the community some money. And we actually successfully did that, saving them about $33,000 on this one apparatus. So, you can imagine the next few apparatus that are going to be up for bid in the upcoming fiscal year, which represents four more units, roughly that's $188,000 in savings that our bid versus some of the other ones. So, we're just trying to get a better perspective on, on the evaluations, how you guys measure that, so we can do something different in the future if it's so required. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. While we have you, could you just clarify or restate your statement regarding the chief deputy and the stricken bid amount?
Yes, I had a conversation with Chief Deputy City Clerk McDaniels this afternoon. My, one of my representatives also had a conversation with her as well. And it was in reference to the $607,154.19 quote that was actually used in one of the manufacturers. And I don't know if you want me to address the manufacturer's name at this time, but, and the actual amount that was in the big closing when we were there and we were present at that big closing for that same manufacturer was $628,194.30 against our $595.029.35. So, we're trying to figure out where the discrepancy is in numbers. I think the confusing part really, what set this in motion is that we were told that that number should have never been used. So, it's just sort of streamlined some other items in question as well. Gail? I think he's making like real serious allegations and I would like for you to look into it. This is not the first time that's a vendor, yeah, this is not the first time. Just recently, a few months ago, another person that bid to cut our trees was the lowest bidder and they gave it to somebody else. So, I think these are real serious accusations and concerns that he's bringing forward. So, I hope that you and your staff, I know the city manager's not here. I guess you are his staff. So, I hope that the city manager, you and Lawrence, really look into it and get to the bottom of it. I don't really want to go back and forth because, you know, we don't really know the whole story. We're just hearing it from one side. But it's something pretty serious that he's accusing the process of, so. And I don't mean to be accused, I just want to note that, you know, we're not in the business to try to force people to buy our truck. That's not what we want. You know, we support any customer that buys any truck, whether it's one of ours or not. That's our job, right? To support our customers and support the communities. So, for that being, we just wanted to get a better perspective on how this is going forward because right now, we feel like it's sort of a losing battle. Is that the bid that's on the agenda tonight?
Yes.
We should probably even pull it until we get a better understanding now that this has been brought to us.
I agree wholeheartedly. And I think that all of us are interested in a fair and transparent and accurate bidding process. So, if there was discrepancy or a change in the process, I think that that should be a part of the public record and that also should be detailed and notified to the council before we make a decision. Because I'm not comfortable making a decision even when there's a question of something like this because as the councilman said, it's very serious. And at the end of the day, the council will be held accountable for voting on these types of contracts with issues that are flagged and brought to our attention. So, I want to thank you for coming forward and raising the concern. And we can all assure you that we will get to the bottom of this.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Madam Mayor, I have a question. Oh, okay, because with the city clerk, with the deputy city clerk making a statement, I would like to know, you know, what, what was, what went wrong. But I'm also reading the staff report that says that their bid did not include the taxes and, so, it didn't include taxes and something on here. So, perhaps, I don't know if it was us or if it was them. The bid proposal did not include taxes and fees. And so, perhaps when we do send out the bidding, we can make sure that we request that it, that your bid include taxes and fees. Because I know that people want to be specific and some do include it and some don't. But if you don't ask for it, then it's not included. But then, it has to be included in order for us to get the accurate price. So, but I would also like to know what, Madam City Clerk, what the deputy city clerk weighed in and to let this gentleman know.
Yes, Mr. City Attorney.
I have a suggestion that since it's on the agenda, that when we get to the item, we can hear from the, from the staff.
Right.
And we can discuss it more fully.
Okay, thank you, Mr. City Attorney. So, we'll table additional discussion until we get to the item. And I hope that the appropriate staff are preparing themselves to respond as well during this time. Thank you. The next speaker of the evening is Mr. Floyd Smith.
Ms. Mayor, city councilperson, and the community, good evening. I'm here on- Uh, I'm here, uh, uh, on, uh, April twentieth, uh, we know about the homely shelter on that property, uh, Rosecrans. However, um, on, uh, April the twenty-first, uh, that Saturday, um, we come to the property to clean up the property at, uh, ten oh five Rosecrans. We call it Track forty-eight twenty-eight. Uh, the neighbors at, the neighbors, uh, came to us and told us that, uh, the neighbors at twelve eleven East Rosecrans had taken the trash to ten oh five East Rosecrans of the street, and they, they was appalled. They did it in the daytime, at the daylight. However, uh, garbage was, uh, placed in front of our property, turned over. We called the sheriff, and they came out, and the neighbor told them what they have seen. However, after taking the report, the officer said that he would go to the city on Saturday and ask to have the trash picked up. That didn't happen. On April twenty-fifth, twenty eighteen, someone with a big truck plowed into our gate and knocked all the poles out of line. Gate was destroyed. We called the sheriff again. Officer Perez came, came, came out after eight calls, two hours. He said it was priority. He showed up and taking pictures of vandalism. On four twenty-six, twenty eighteen, I was notified that a drilling truck was on the property, and they was drilling. So I called the sheriff again and told them that we had a vandalism violation against the property on four twenty-five, uh, uh, eighteen. And it was the next day, four twenty-six, twenty eighteen, we have a company called Choice Drilling, and the supervisor, a white lady, was there. I approached her kindly and told her that I was the original, uh, owner, and I have the original deeds in my possession, and that I had called the sheriff and told them that I have the original deeds to that property. The white lady told the officer someone was trying to steal the land. However, she was violating six oh two P, uh, illegal trespassing. However, she told the officer that she was leaving. I have proof that I, I was the legal owner. I showed the officer and told him that I have the deeds right here, right now. I, and so he told me to take it up with the city. I was shocked. I am a professional. I have to go every two years for continued education by law. What's this discrimination against the sheriff or what? Who do I address this to? I have the original deeds tonight, if you want to see the deeds to this property. We having a big problem with that property, and I am the owner. And I want to know what I should do, or what somebody to do while the officer's telling me to come to the city. What do the city have to do with private property?
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I'm going to ask that, um, our city staff get more information on this particular issue so that we can look into it and provide some more clarity for you.
I beg your pardon?
I'm going to ask that the city management get additional, I'm sorry. Mr. Adams is in the rear. If you can contact him and get some additional information and find out what the issue is regarding the sheriffs and this incident.
Well, I, but see, the thing, I'm having a problem with, the trash is still there. We got, uh, McDonald's down there, we got Subway down there, and it's a big old crate of garbage. It's not trash, it's garbage.
Okay, we can address it.
And somebody need to pick it up. I talked with the city council.
What street is it on?
Uh-huh.
What street?
No, it's on the sidewalk. And then we cleaned it up. We, huh, on Rosecrans.
Is it in my district?
Huh?
Is it my district?
Yeah, it's a big crate.
All right.
And I, I talked with the city manager.
Dave, get your number, and we'll follow up with it immediately tomorrow, and we'll do whatever we can do to help.
Because they're going to have rats out there big as day, you know, we're going to have a big problem if, if nobody, and, and they, and-
I got it, I got it already, I got it.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Matthews, please.
Got it, got it, got it. Dave.
Mrs. Kim Delay Manning?
Good evening. First of all, I extend my thanks to Councilwoman McCoy and to the city council members for recognizing the Hub City chapter of top ladies of distinction. It was well overdue. Those ladies work extremely hard here in this city, and I was very proud to see them recognized for their services. Um, I'm here tonight, unfortunately, I have some big concerns. Um, let me start at the bottom. We have, we had an incident, and Councilwoman, I don't know if you were notified of it, but yesterday morning, on the corner of Central and a hundred fifty-six, there was a sofa and some other housing items right there at that wonderful empty lot. So I made a stop and took some pictures, and the gentleman told me, that's the new dumping yard. So I just need to bring that to your attention. Um, today it is gone, so I assume that somebody notified you and it was removed, but it is not there today. But there was an orange sofa and some other items. Okay, so that was taken care of. Um, my other concern is, I did some research. I think you had a town hall meeting in February, and we talked about the wat- not a town hall meeting. We met with you at a block club meeting. We talked about the water, of course, we all know the situation, and there was going to be some research done and testing. I have since taken upon myself to do some research and found out that, even though we have many companies that provide the water here in the city of Compton, the water comes clear, crystal clear and clean. The problem is not the companies that are supplying the water. The problem is Compton. Our pipes need to be changed. That's what I have been told. Um, there's been research on that, and this came from the metropolitan water basin. So we need to look at that, and I realize that we have no money for all these wonderful things like our streets, but I'm afraid that we're going to be losing some of our citizens if we don't take care of this problem with our water. It's urgent, and I know there are people here today with concerns with water. We all have it. My other concern is with the good old sheriff department. Two weeks ago, I went, I called, uh, the sheriff department, and I wanted to get a report that they were supposed to have. I was in my car, I was driving, I was on speakerphone. I spoke with Deputy Carter. He told me that I could be transferred to his secretary, and I could get the report. Of course, there was no secretary to respond. I spoke to the automation, the, uh, answer phone. In the meantime, I was on my way to the sheriff's station. So I arrived, and I was told to go and speak to the little man in there who answers the six oh five or six five oh line that's out there. Well, I need to see Captain Thatcher, Deputy Williams, Deputy Williams, and Deputy Carter, because I don't have a report, and somebody's going to answer me. I'm tired.
Ms. Delay, we will ensure that you receive a report.
I don't want to wait until you call me tomorrow, because they won't tonight. Somebody needs to call.
I don't know if that's possible tonight, but we will make the request. Um, Dr. Gail, I don't see Captain Thatcher in the, in the back, but if there is a sergeant, is he back there? Oh, oh, okay, I don't know who, who's representing him tonight, but I would like a report this evening on what's happening. Thank you.
Uh, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Dr. Gail, where, where is Captain Thatcher? Is he still with the city? I haven't seen him in a while. Is?
Yeah, they switch without telling us.
They have, in the past.
Madam Mayor, can we make sure that with the sheriff's department that they have someone that will be able to respond to our citizens?
Oh, abso- absolutely, here, and they usually do, I don't know why.
Yes.
They don't have someone tonight. And also send Captain Thatcher a message.
Maybe some, maybe somebody can walk her over there. I mean, because it, usually it's three or four deputies sitting at that table, and last week it wasn't anybody, so I'm just curious.
Ms. Martha Barajas?
Good evening. My name is Martha Barajas, and I reside at seven nineteen West one thirty-eighth Street. Um, this is for the entire, uh, city council. First and foremost, I want to apologize for me being out of character last week. I was really upset, because when people talk about Sativa, and they're not living the condition we're living, I feel it's a lack of respect from the people to come and, and just, just talk, because they just want a two minutes of fame. So with that said, I really want to apologize to you and the audience. And another thing to you, Madam Mayor, I was reading on social media that, um, there was a choice given to us, um, to either move to Compton Water or to stay in Sativa, and we chose to stay and pay a flat rate. I feel very offended, because the choice was never given to us, at least to me or to the residents. Uh, and if there is a choice for me to switch over, by all means, tell me where to go. I hate the fact that we get surprises daily by Sativa's water. Either we get clear water today, at night we get brown water. Just let us know where to go.
There was a public hearing, um, back in two thousand and ten, um, and where all of the Sativa customers were invited to come and speak, and the Sativa customers, excuse me, residents came, um, and they voiced their, um, distinct, distinct opposition to joining Compton Water because of the price. But the council did give our city management the directive, um, at the last council meeting, um, based on, in part, some of your testimony, to provide this opportunity to Sativa customers again that are Compton residents, and so that choice will be coming forward again soon for you all to have that option.
Okay, I just feel that, that if we pay cheaper, we get brown water. And if we get, if we pay a little bit more, we get better quality of water.
Yes, ma'am.
That's just the way I take it in.
Mm-hmm.
And I just feel really upset, because there's not thirty residents that, um, that are serviced through Sativa that sit in the Compton area. There's over a hundred, over a hundred residents. Just on my block and at one thirty-nine, there is maybe fifty, and then you need to, you need to add the rear locations. So it's just very sensitive right now. A lot of people are, are upset because of the water issue. It's critical. You wouldn't want to bathe in the water. We're bathing. We have to run the water, even if we go outside, that we have to run the water for ten, fifteen minutes. We get a ticket, a five hundred dollar ticket if Sativa passes by. So, but that said, I just, I just feel that it's just not fair for us right now. And another thing, as the city, I, I feel that somebody, although it's quote unquote "natural" issue, we still sit in Compton, we're still human beings. We need the help. We do really need the help. We got a donation of forty-five thousand cases of water, and the reason they're sitting in my house and we're giving out the water, Sativa took it upon themselves to take the water from the church, the donation we got from a private donor, and took it to their building. So that's why, um, we're going to be giving out water tomorrow until it runs out, from one to seven. From one to seven, um, the seven hundred block was one thirty-eighth Street.
Thank you, and we'll repeat that information again at the end of the meeting.
Perfect.
Thank you.
And lastly, I know, I know-
You're out of time, ma'am.
My time is over, but, um, if you guys really care about the Sativa people, the residents in Compton, you got two individuals from Sativa workers harassing the citizens and the residents of the Compton area.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Barajas, and we'll get additional information from you.
We've united in force, and we're not going to stay quiet.
Ms. Barajas, thank you, I've given you a lot of additional time.
How are they harassing you guys?
I'm, I'm going to ask that we just maintain order, um, Council McGee, and I'll let her speak longer as well.
Yeah, but you're not getting the brown water, and we are. But we thank you, Mayor, and hopefully somebody will show up tomorrow and, and dress us.
Thank you.
Um, it's two individuals hired by, uh, Mr. Landeros, telling the residents, did you get ro- brown water? If you do, just give me a sample, and if it's clear, then you go to jail. That's harassing.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Mr. Derek McGee?
Good morning, Ms., I mean, good afternoon, Mrs. Mayor and, uh, councilpeople. My name is Derek McGee. I live on a hundred and thirty-eighth Street in the city of Compton. I am a person who is from Compton. And I did hear you say that there was a choice back in two thousand and ten. I wasn't in Compton at that time when that came up, um, but I have lived in that area previous before that. This brown water situation is mostly new. It's like two, three years new. I've been living where I live at now for five years. Um, and I do understand borderlines of county and city. But my thing is, even though it's not a real Compton city problem, I'm a Compton native. I am from, I, I, I live Compton. But it is in, inhumane to have brown water. If animal control came to your house and you had dirty water, giving it to your animal, you would be cited. You would have to show up in front of a judge. So I don't think that it's fair to have to pay for brown water to bathe in, you know, just humanely. It is just inhumane. So what I'm asking, it's not something you guys really can do something about, you have your hands tied, but help us get the steps to who we need to step to, so that we can get what is just humanely correct. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. McGee, um, and we have been discussing this publicly for the last several weeks, and- Yes, um, and so the first step is that Sativa is governed by L. A. County Board of Supervisors. And so the Board of Supervisors, your supervisor is Supervisor Mark Billy Thomas. Uh, he is responsible for overseeing Sativa. And the Board of Supervisors, they meet every Tuesday, um, at ten A. M. downtown. We can provide you with that information. Um, Sativa also has its own elected board. There are several board members, um, one of which I know for sure lives in the city of Compton, and so we can also provide you with that information. On the Co- city of Compton's website, under the news section, we also have been posting, um, current information from Sativa regarding their response, their timelines, and the actual issues that they have reported, and also the state intervention update. And so they're currently, um, has been monitoring. I know you've been watching the news, um, they have indicated that quote unquote "the water is safe." I believe in treating people the way that I want to be treated. If I had brown water coming out of my tap, I wouldn't care, um, what government agency said what. Obviously, the water is unacceptable. And so, um, we are standing with the citizens regardless of whether or not you all are with Compton Water. You're still a Compton resident, which is why this council gave the staff directive to take the proper steps to provide the opportunity for Compton residents to be absolved, um, into Compton water system, so that you all can have a choice to switch from Sativa. So we're currently working on that. Um, and so we will, are also in contact with Sativa, and our city administration has gone over to Sativa and met with them to, um, really understand what's happening there and what their response will be to remedy the issue. And so we'll continue to provide those updates publicly as we receive them, um, but this is not something that we take lightly, because brown water is something that is just unacceptable, period, whether or not you are paying a flat rate or whether or not you're paying, um, as you go. It's still unacceptable.
Yeah, like I say, if you go to the grocery store and you see a case with brown water in it, and you see the clear water, you're not going to buy the brown water unless you want tea.
Exactly.
So, you know, everybody's getting this water in their homes, and pretty much Sativa's answer to the citizens that paid them is nothing but be on time or pay this late fee.
Right. So I, we thank you, um, I wish we had more that we could do, um, at this time, but we're staying on top of this. Again, any Compton resident that's impacted by a brown water issue, I mean, it impacts all of us. Um, and so we're going to continue to stay on top of this and monitor, um, Sativa and provide the information, and also coordinate with the Board of Supervisors as well. Um, and we'll continue to provide those updates as we receive them. Thank you.
Uh, Mayor, I'm gonna-
Yes, ma'am.
Um, just to kind of, uh, not to repeat everything that the mayor just said, that said, but the city manager is working very closely with Sativa, with the Congresswoman, and with the state to actually reassure the folks that the water is, is okay. But is it okay to have brown water? No. Is it okay to be in the shower and all of a sudden your water spurts out brown? No, it is not okay. But still, uh, to say that, the people have to understand that it is, most of the Sativa resident, uh, uh, customers are in the first district of the city of Compton that I represent. Though you have to understand that they have they on board, we have no jurisdiction over Sativa water. We have to take steps in order to take over and make them do right. Are they doing right? I don't think so. I'm not afraid to say that I do not believe that brown water is okay. I do not, you know, and you have to really see this brown water to really understand it. They say, I've been over a few of my friend's house that have the brown water. They say run the water. Sativa says run the water, fifteen minutes are so, let it clean out. But you get a whole b-
But you get a whole bathtub of brown water, and it's still coming out brown. Then the water may come clean, and then you get in the shower, you think it's okay, and then the brown water spurts out. Now do I, now, I'm not an expert, I'm not a chemist, but I do know dirty brown water is not safe to drink or to bathe in. I believe it causes all kinds of things. You know, folks say it's causing rashes, it's causing acne, it's causing hair loss. Who am I to say that it's not? But I do believe that brown water should cause something. I mean, it just looked nasty, if nothing else. So, you know, I, I support the Sativa customers. I'm doing everything I can on my end to make sure that our city manager is doing everything to make sure that they are in compliance and has put the pressure on Sativa water. You know, this is probably the first time. I wasn't here on the council in 2010, so I can't speak to the, to the option of Compton or Sativa. I wasn't here, nor did I live in Sativa service area. So I, I don't know about that. But as of now, I don't know of any options that have been given. But I do know since the folks in the, the fight to get clean water at their homes have put pressure on Sativa, and this is the first time that I know that they've done some robo calls, telling you where to call, they've done routine flushing of the fire hydrants. Prior to Martha Barajas' fight to get clean water just fed up, Sativa Water was sitting back saying nothing. So, you know, I just want to say kudos to the folks that came out and said, "Enough is enough, and we demand, we demand clean water." So our city manager is preparing a update on the findings from the state, from the county, and, you know, making sure that, that the Sativa water is in compliance, and we're also looking into some options of incorporating those forty to a hundred Sativa customers into Compton Water, which the rates will change. You know, you have to understand that Compton Water is a lot more expensive than Sativa Water, but for the most part, it's nice and clean. And sometimes you want to give your baby a clean glass of water or a clean bath, you know, a tub to bathe in. So I would suggest for everybody to come out to the town hall meeting tomorrow, that Congresswoman Barragan is hosting at George Washington Elementary, is from six to seven thirty. And we'll have a lot of resources there. The city manager will be there with an, with an update on the findings that, that we've gathered. And I just, I urge all of you to come out and don't stop until they clean, till the water is clean. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Let me just say the same thing. I stand with the Sativa water customers. However, it is such a tedious process. We can't just, what you need to understand is the city can't just go in and take over. They have their own company, they have their own wells, and the wells have to be deemed uninhabitable, or they have to be deemed that there is something wrong in order for the city to even step in. So the first process, please attend that town hall meeting. The EPA will be there, that's the Environmental Protection Agency, and those are the organizations that can help get you to the point to understand, because the Health Department or some other entity has to be the one to say that there's something wrong with the water there in order for us to even take the first step to do anything. We cannot just go in and take over because it belonged, the water rights belong to someone else. So please attend those meetings, that meeting tomorrow, and make sure you talk to the appropriate people so that they can understand how serious this is, because we just, we as the city, as much as we would like to, we cannot, because they don't, we, we don't own the rights they do. So please attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman McCoy. And just a last explanation point is that you have an opportunity to speak to the U.S. EPA tomorrow, you have an opportunity to speak to your congressperson tomorrow, and so you have the leverage and you're in the, in the right place to be able to contact the right people that can create the, the right pressure on Sativa. The city, we're a different jurisdiction, but you have the opportunity for your state, your federal officials to be able to do their jobs and to ensure your safety. And so please come out to the town hall tomorrow and voice your concerns and hold your proper elected officials accountable. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Will the Health Department be there tomorrow?
I, I believe that they will, according to the city management.
Okay.
Yes. Ms. Rocio Rojas? Also, I just wanted to, there are two more speakers. Just giving an update from Captain Thatcher. He is currently with the family of the officer that accidentally shot himself on today. And so just provide your thoughts and prayers to their family. And we did ensure that there was a proper representative to come and take care of Mr. Lay Manning's request.
Madam Mayor, they did, someone did come in and get this.
Yes, I saw them.
So thank you.
Thank you.
You said somebody shot him something?
Accidentally, yes. It was in the news earlier. The next speaker is Ms. Maria Villarreal.
Good evening, Maria Villarreal, District One. Tonight, I'm here to announce a grand opening that is going to happen this Sunday through the Latino Chamber of Commerce to Carina's Furniture. It's going to take place in twenty twenty-five Long Beach Boulevard, and the time is from to twelve PM to two PM. Everybody's invited, you're welcome. Again, it's a grand opening and ribbon cutting. The other issue, I mean, the other thing that I want to talk about is our Cinco de Mayo celebration is coming up this Saturday. Again, everybody, the whole community is invited. It's going to be at twenty-two zero-one East Alondra Boulevard. It's going to be from twelve to six. We invite the community to come out and patronize the business. And again, these events are not only celebrating the Cinco de Mayo, but also helping the businesses to promote themselves. Everybody's welcome. And I also wanted to, I hear this concerns about Sativa and its water. And a couple of weeks ago, I, I think I brought that issue also to this council that in my house, I'm a Compton resident, I'm a District One resident, and I'm not Sativa, but I'm Compton Water Department, and I do have brown water too. The only thing that we, that I have is two people from the Water Department come into my house and run the water faucet, and they look at the water, the water's clear, and they will say it. Ms. Tana McCoy saw some pictures the other day about my water, and I should be there tomorrow for that meeting. So Sativa, yes, they have a big issue, but also Compton residents too. And as resident of Compton, I do pay taxes too, and I deserve clear water too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maria Villarreal. Mr. Adolfo Perez?
Good evening, council. Can you hear me? So you guys know, first anything, before my job that I work in the, in the city with the chamber, I am a local Opelika activist here in the southeast. And the one thing I do fight in other cities and other communities, transparent and transparency within the government that holds our elected officials accountable. The one thing that I've noticed and I've seen as an activist, we have roles and standards that we do have to place involving of activating our community and other communities and educating, as well as fighting for transparency. Sadly, we don't have that within our community. Most activists hear this today. The one thing I say this is, as an activist, I have an opportunity to speak with concerned residents, as well other concerned residents in other cities, that I normally, routinely go to their council meetings. The one thing I've realized and I've seen is that a lot of concern with individuals that make accusations to residents or non-residents. At the end of the day, these people and individuals are here trying to spread the word, as well as be more transparent. And the one thing I've realized that there's a lot of fear, a lot of fear from individuals that put that fear and scare our community. And sadly, we do have that. Individuals contacting me multiple times about issues with a certain individual in this room that has been called by the police twice, to the Sheriff's Department, threatened their lives and threatened them safety, as well as much as anything for raising their concerns. Being an activist doesn't put scare or fear onto people. An activist is fighting for something that is right, but doing it in the right way. Sadly, we don't have that. We have people that act one way and act a different way on the streets. Thankfully, there is people that do have phones and record the incidents and will take it a further legal action, whether it's restraining order or putting them to court. And sadly, we do have that individual here, and sadly, she is an activist, but she is a good one as well. But some roles and taxes that is not right, and it's not fair, and it's not just, and it's not even right to do an individual, especially threaten their lives, threaten to go out of their cars for seven people, six people, to beat them up, to harm them, when we have that on camera. Two times, the police department's been called. Now, we're going to take illegal action within, through doing a restraining order and sending them to maybe to jail. And that's what is my goal today. And that person, that individual today, is goes by the name Matra Pajas. She continues to harass these individuals, and we have it on camera. I've walked with these individuals that come to talk to them that come for Sativa. They don't say that, they don't go to jail. It's not accurate, and it's not transparent. That's what the activism is, to be transparent, and she's not. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Limboon.
Limboon, City of Compton. First, I'd like to congratulate the ladies of distinction again. And secondly, I want to address item number three, to transfer funds. The only thing that I'm confused with, I never read that Measure P was supposed to help with elections, especially election expenses. I never read that in regards to Measure P. And the other thing I want to say, I'm so proud of Martha Baraja and the rest of the people in the fight for the water. But what I'm confused with, I hear up here that everybody is concerned with the people from Compton. And I'm sure, yeah, you can't do anything about Sativa. But, you know, there's other politicians, Mike Gibson, naming one, that actually has stepped up to the plate, he's donating water. But I don't hear nothing from the people of Compton, not even out there passing out water. I understand you can't say anything to the board, but these, just like they're saying, they're human beings. Nobody's out there on the front trying to give out water. Not one of you. Not one of you. And it's more than a hundred homes. But we have one person out there making statements, "Oh, no, it's not us, it's not me." That's not treating someone the way that you would want to be treated. Come on, you guys. You know, the ones from Compton, we do, we do want to help one another. And making statements, it's not, it's not our way. So all of those people that are suffering with the brown water, there are things that we can do. And the one thing that I do want to get back to Mike Gibson and the other politicians, we appreciate you, but when you send somebody out there, make sure that they get in contact with the people that actually live out there, because there's water being passed out to people that are not even involved with the brown water. So make sure that this, the water is getting issued to the people that really, really, really need it. And like I said, as far as that Measure P money, you know, where's the committee? Where's the committee that was promised, that was going to be involved? Because, you know, the ones that supposedly voted on it, they're not being addressed. And the other thing, this is May the first, when are those fake commissions going to be dissolved? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Boon. Mr. Holyfield?
Thank you very much, Honorable Mayor and City Council staff, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Benjamin Holyfield, and I'm the president of the Compton Business Chamber of Commerce. I like to say, as it relates to Alabama, Mr. Levin, by the way, I've been coming here for a lot of years, a lot of years, and I've never really said where I'm from. I'm from Alabama. So I understand this gentleman, he's been really giving back, him and his agency and to us, and he lived, by the way, I didn't even know myself. He lived within walking distance of where I live. He lived off one hundred and fifty-sixth Street, and so do I, where that crouch situation was located at, in that vacant lot. The thing that I'm saying is, you hear so much about the water, there was a young lady and her husband, and she's the one who had that African artwork and so forth at the Tran, at the Dollar Heinz Center. She's the one that had that, and she brought some water and her husband, and they talked about the nasty water. And that reminded me about Michigan. And Michigan, you know, started off years ago, and it wasn't cleared up. It was just a lot of talk. And we have to have a council, and we have, we have a mayor and a council, that's really dedicated to doing something now. All this talking and nothing never really happens, have to be cut out. An example, someone will say, "Well, this happened, whose district is it?" Well, you got to be on your job, and you automatically know your district. Compton Boulevard separates four districts itself. You don't have to ask anybody whose district it is. And we want to clean and have a moratorium on this ghetto situation, this ghetto look, because that's what's causing all of it. An example, last week, we mentioned this tent situation like, like some kind of Indian tent on Compton Boulevard near the creek. I think we, we talked about it. Now tomorrow, the gentleman, whoever he is, will be helped, but the grass has been cut. So that means that those houses is not in danger now, being, if somebody puts in their own fire or something, because he was burning, he had a campfire out there. Could have caught the whole thing on fire, that whole area could have burned up. But, and then he, it's my understanding, not coming from you. And see, we have a, we have a person here who's not interested at all. Comes to me, one meeting out of, out of four. We have to have everybody here on time. We've got to cut the, I'm a business person, I come here to help grow business, just like Mr. Alabama. That's my job. Clean, safe, and friendly. If you're not with it, leave it. Don't come up with excuses and try to be fighting the public and fighting the people who have you there, who helped you to get there. There's a madness here. We first have to get our house in order. And when we say something, do it. And don't wait till two or three weeks later to move on it, on the issue. And thank you so much for allowing me the time, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Holyfield, and Mr., excuse me, Ms. Deanna Medall.
Thank you so much. I arrived minutes after, so thank you for the opportunity to speak. Mother's Day is coming up very shortly, and we understand that there are some moms in our community that might be spending this day alone. For that, we want to make sure that mothers are being celebrated on that day. Mr. Gibson is hosting a Mother's Day brunch at the Carson Community Center for those moms who might find themselves in that situation. So we want to extend the invitation to City Council to help us spread the word about this Mother's Day brunch, so we ensure that they come out and we celebrate the day with them. On May nineteenth, and I'm sorry, just to go back, May thirteenth, at the Carson Community Center at ten AM. On May nineteenth, the Assembly Member is hosting his annual Women in Leadership Breakfast, and that will be from nine to twelve noon, also at the Carson Community Center. And this year, he is honoring our very own Kia Patterson, proud owner of Grocery Outlet, so she will be getting recognized for all of her work in the sixty-fourth Assembly District. Just to touch a little bit, I know we're having a town hall tomorrow, so a lot of the questions are going to be answered on Sativa and other water agencies. I do want to just remind everyone that we have started a campaign to ensure that all of the community complaints are going directly where they are supposed to be, which is the State Water Board. And I just want to invite the community members who live within these agencies who, where they might find the brown water, to ensure to contact our office, visit our website, or speak to me. We want to make sure that these complaints are going directly to the, to the State Water Board, and there is action being taken on those complaints. And then again, I do want to emphasize that this is a, this is a huge process. We've been on many different phone conferences with Sativa, the State Water Board, and then also including our supervisor, Mark Ridley Thomas. So again, it is, it is a process. It shouldn't be this long, but unfortunately, this is what we do have to go through. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm just gonna ask that our city staff include the city members' contact information for these new services that they're providing to route residents to the appropriate channels. If we can make sure that that's on our city's homepage, and we can also direct Marcus constituents there as well. Thank you. Madam City Clerk?
We're at consent agenda.
Thank you. Consent items are retrieved and expected to be controversial. They will be acted upon by the council at once without discussion unless a council member requests for an item to be removed or discussed.
Sommo, second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Councilperson Zarita.
Yes.
Galvane.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Cherie.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Item number three under new business is a resolution of the City Council, City of Compton, to amend the 2017-18 fiscal year budget and transfer funds for special election expenses in the amount of $50,000.
Sommo.
Second.
Discussion? Madam?
Yes.
I did have a issue, a concern, is that I was wondering, the funds is coming from the Public Works Department, it's coming out of the Public Works budget. I was wondering, and I know this is Measure P money, but I was wondering if someone could explain if there's another form of a continuous payment that we could use, besides the Measure P funds? Is that what the Measure P funds are gonna be used for, is that how it's supposed to be used? If someone could just kind of explain that to the, to the community?
We're gonna request Mr. Adams to come forward. And then also, just to follow up to one of the constituents' request or notes regarding the Measure P Committee, the council has already selected the committee, and so we need to ensure that staff is actually convening the committee on a quarterly basis as Measure P indicates and as the council has directed. Please.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, the request before you tonight is to transfer $50,000 to cover expenses for the, for special election expenses that were held this year. We have provided in the budget, in previous budget resolutions, for funds to cover the election expense. But the amount was an estimate. When the actual bills came in, the actual total bills require an approximately forty, $42,000 in additional funds. We recommended just $50,000 because there still could be a couple of bills that would need to be paid in this fiscal year. We believe that this would cover it. As far as the use of the source of Measure P, this year's Measure P budget was approximately $13 million. Of that $13 million, there was a $7 million contingency. That $7 million contingency was all placed in the Public Works Departmental Budget. We have been blessed with over $10 million in additional revenue for Public Works projects this year from other sources. So in terms of covering the $50,000, it would be a de minimis expense relative to the resources that are available.
I think what the question is, Mr. Adams, is that, and I wanted for the community to understand and for you to explain, because there's a lot of concerns coming up about the Measure P money and how it's being spent. And I'm asking, this, of $50 million, of $50,000 that we are talking about, is this, can these funds be utilized for that, to pay for this election? That's what I'm asking, because
Oh, certainly.
Yeah, so I just want that to be explained to the community as to why it's being done like that. Because there's questions that's gonna be coming about it from the community.
Certainly. The Measure P funds are, we've set aside 55% by formula for those funds to cover capital, capital improvement projects, in particular, street and road improvements. But as far as the source of funds, it is a general resource of the city. And like I'm saying, of the $50,000 that's being requested here, we have realized, based on what we budgeted, we have realized at least $50,000 in additional revenue. So this does not impact at all what the city budgeted, and it is ineligible, it's ineligible use of those, those, those resources.
It's a what now?
Pardon?
You say it's what? I couldn't hear you.
An eligible use of those resources.
Okay.
And the resources are coming in sufficient that we have an extra $50,000 more than we budgeted. So this will not have any negative impact on what we're, we're budgeting to have done in the capital improvement program.
Yeah, I, I want you to understand that I agree that we should pay the bill, that I want everyone to know, I do agree that we should pay the bill. The bill should be paid, but I'm just looking at the fact that using the money that community is looking at, thinking that it's supposed to be used for streets and other things, and I'm just wondering if this is, can you just explain? Just wanted to make sure that you could explain as to why the funds are being used for this particular purpose. That, yeah, that's what's it.
Me? Okay.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman?
Mr. Adams?
So I see that we have about a $40,000, $40,365,000 to pay Martin and Chapman. And we're putting, we're gonna transfer $50,000 for a special election fund. So if we don't get the other almost $9,000 and some dollars worth of bills, will we transfer that money back? Or will it stay in a fund for special elections?
No. At June 30th, 2018, any unexpended funds for which there is no bill that will come in will automatically revert back to the, to the fund. And in this case, those funds, we maintain a separate accounting for the Measure P funds.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay. One of the questions that also came up was about the Measure P Committee. We're gathering information for the Measure P Committee, and we intend to have a meeting of the Measure P Committee during the month of May.
Thank you. Okay, and I would just ask that whenever that meeting is scheduled, that of course, I know that you all notify the council with daily reports, but if we can also make that meeting public as well, just the noticing of the, of the meeting, so that the taxpayers can understand that we're complying with what we have committed to do as a council.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
And then, Mr. Adams, before you leave, so I don't know if you can answer, or the city clerk. So what, what was the, the approximate cost of the special election? Was, was it 261,000 or was it 370,000?
The, the total cost, that includes also, we had a special election in November. And this also covers January, so it's both elections. So I believe the November election came in around 245,000, and the January election was approximately 149 or something.
What was the January election?
That was the, marijuana.
Okay. So that's what people, you know, people need to understand that elections are expensive.
Very.
And somebody have to pay for them, so when you have all these recalls and all this stuff, if a recall, if you get enough signatures, the election is gonna cost $270,000?
Approximately.
And the city pays, does the petitioner pay for that, or does the city pay for that?
No, the city covers the cost.
Yeah, so you know, it's something to think about. But, okay, so that's fine. So I just have one question I want to ask you. So since you can pay for this, this is, this is eligible to be paid for out of Measure P money. Is there anything that you can think of that cannot be paid for with Measure P money?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Deanna.
Thank you, and just for clarity for the, for the public, Mr. City Attorney, do you mind weighing in on that as well? On, in terms of the eligibility for use of Measure P funding?
Measure P funds represent a general tax. So when it's turned into dollars, it's a general fund designation. So it goes wherever our general fund dollars can be spent. And it's mostly at the discretion of the city.
And just to remind the residents, the city did approve a Measure P spending plan. And so the percentages that Mr. Adams indicated, with 55% being a portion for road improvements and for public improvements, that's something that the council approved at the council level. And so they are following the Measure P spending plan that this council has approved.
Madam?
Yes, ma'am.
I would ask, I'd like to ask a question to the city clerk, Madam City Clerk. Is that, I can't recall about the November election, what was the election for? I can't recall what it was for. Because when I started reading it, I looked at, there was two elections, one for November, and then the other one for January 23rd. And you just explained what the one for January 23rd was for, but what was the November election for?
The November election was for the salary increase.
Oh, for salary increase, okay.
And then, Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
While we're talking about Measure P, Mr. City Attorney, when, back, I don't know when, but there was talk that Measure P was in court? Whatever happened with that, do you know?
They lost, remember, it was a closed session?
No, an open session. The, the case was found against the petitioners.
So there's not more legal, legal actions against Measure P?
No, the case was closed, there's no more.
Thank you.
That's not an open matter at all.
Thank you.
Wasn't there like a big breakthrough in that case? That's what someone said in public comment. Right? Remember somebody said, we just had a big breakthrough and we're gonna win?
No, I don't remember.
I don't remember.
I remember.
The city was victorious. Thank you. Any additional discussion? Roll call?
Councilperson Zarita.
Yes.
Galvane.
Yes.
McCoy.
Yes.
Cherie.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Item number four is a resolution of the City Council, City of Compton, amending the 2017-18 fiscal year budget to transfer funds and authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with South Coast Fire Equipment, Inc., Pierce, for the purchase of one fire engine for the fire department in the amount of $607,154.19.
Sommo.
Second.
Discussion? Regarding the matter that was raised publicly, regarding the bid discrepancies, could we just have a public explanation of this item and a confirmation that this information is in fact accurate and correct? We have our fire chief on his way. And if we also could have a member of city management or a person in connection with the actual opening of the bids or the bid process to ensure that that was done properly?
Good to see you, Chief Thompson.
Madam City Clerk?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council.
I was just making sure everybody was queued up, so that I'm ready. You can go first, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. We put out an RFP in reference to a fire engine and three rescue squads. We were, tonight, we put on, we put on the agenda the engine, the fire engine. During the RFP bid opening, there was one vendor that was present during the actual bid process. All of the bids were read publicly, and then after they were read, they were given to me. And then I took them to my office where we, and being, we being my apparatus committee, we actually look at the bids, that's when we open up and, and look through everything. Upon discovering on one of the vendors, a bid that was publicly announced, when we opened up that bid, there was a prepayment amount in there, which was significantly less than what the bid amount that was read. I immediately contacted the, the city clerk's office to inform them that here is a, here's the actual bid, which was less than the initial $628,000 bid. And that bid was 607,140 some, what you see there. I also wanted to make sure, because one of the vendors did publicly come to the bid opening, I then contacted that vendor, right after I got off the phone with the city clerk, and informed that vendor that the bid that was read actually was, it's a, there was a prepay amount that was significantly less. Now, the factors that we utilized for the selection of the fire truck was not just based on the price of the fire engine. Now, if I was able to purchase all of them, in my presentation before this body, I mentioned the goal that we had to replace our aging engines. And I wish that I could replace all of them at one time, but that would be roughly about $4 million. So what we were able to do is try to incrementally replace the, the fire engines. So we was only able to purchase one Disco Ram. Now, that means that there, that means that we would get one new vehicle, but have four still aging older vehicles. That was where in the RFP, we also included a performance maintenance plan along with that. Because as you all know, if you buy a new vehicle, that vehicle is not gonna give you no problems for the first year or so. It's gonna be the other vehicles, the older vehicles, that's gonna give you the problems. That's where our financial burden would be, is on continuing to assure that our current older fleet would be able to stay on the road. So that was another factor that was a part of the process. Not only the price of the fire engine, but also the performance maintenance agreement plan. Upon evaluating those factors, there were two of the vendors that actually had the performance maintenance agreement plans. It came down between two vendors, that was E1 and Pierce. E1 was 595,000 and some change, that included tax and everything. Pierce was 607,000, because they, they included a prepayment amount in their bid, which is their option. All vendors could have done the same thing, they could have presented a prepayment option, which means that if you, if you pay it upfront, you get a discount. All vendors had that option to do that. Pierce was the only one that actually did that. So we used their 607 bid. Now, when we sat down with the committee, as you all can tell, that's a $12,000 differential from E1's 595,000 bid and Pierce's 607,000 bid. However, remember, the, 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 the cost is gonna be maintaining the aging fleet. So both had performance maintenance agreements. Pierce's performance maintenance agreement was $6,000 cheaper than E1's maintenance agreement. So now, if you factor that in, now you only have a differential of about $7,000. Now, when you start looking inside of the maintenance agreement, E1, if, if our trucks break down, the mechanical charge is $115 an hour. E1, Pierce's mechanical E-one, Pierce's mechanical charge is eighty-five dollars an hour. So now you talking thirty dollars cheaper than we would spend for a mechanic. And remember, these are older vehicles, they, they've been giving us problem, that's the reason why we before you trying to get new equipment. That was another factor. Another factor was the, the inspections that have to be done, they were cheaper. It was a lot of other things, it come out to be about six thousand dollars cheaper. And if we utilize those factors, now you talking where we're actually gonna save more by having the maintenance agreement plan that's going to keep our aging and older equipment on the streets. So those were the factors that were utilized. Plus, the other thing that we had was because the, the maintenance agreement and the price was so close at each other, the committee also valued what our rest of the fleet was like. The rest of the fleet were, the rest of the fleet is Pierce, they are Pierce already. So what the, what the committee came up with was, well, we would like to stay with what the unisum or the rest of our department look like. So that was a factor in making sure that we kept our vehicles all looking the same. Plus, Area E, Area E, of course, is the area that Compton is associated in for the State of California Fire Response, for the wildland fires, mudslides, and stuff like that. Area E is the preferred, their preferred apparatus is Pierce as well. So we also say we wanna, as well, we wanna stay in unisum with the Area E city's apparatuses as well. So all of those factors were taken in, and that's the reason why Pierce was selected as the, as the engine, as the bid winner on that, and I might add this too, because this is important. Because, because our existing fleet is Pierce, parts are getting expensive. What happens with parts is, if, if, let's say we use another, we use E-one's performance maintenance agreement, and a part goes down and we need a part, they have to get that part from Pierce. So now you're talking about a surcharge on a part from Pierce, that's another factor of a financial burden. By having the Pierce's maintenance agreement, we get the Pierce's part, no additional surcharge. So when, when, when we did our evaluation, it really went in-depth, and we really gave a mindset, because our main goal is to always save the City of Compton money, to ensure that we are rolling out there effectively and efficiently, and that's what we did when we made up this bid.
Thank you, Chief, for the thorough explanation.
Thank you.
Of the bid, and I'd just like to defer to Madam City Clerk as well for her explanation from her office as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So as it, as the, it was stated, my office opened and read the bid. So what, when a bid comes in, our responsibility is to read the total number, and the total number that was read was the six hundred and twenty-eight thousand. We do not go into the, the document and find out what they, what the fire department found out that there is a prepayment. So we never would have read the six hundred and seven thousand, we only read the total amount, and that's, the other amount came out of their analysis when they reviewed the entire. So I'm not sure, after speaking with my deputy, and we talked about it, and she was, she was correct in reading the larger number, which was the six twenty-eight, and, and not the six oh seven, so.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, and just for clarity, the actual bid includes the prepayment discount written in, so it's not that someone called in and bidded a lower number. The actual bid documents indicate the prepayment discount, as well as the other items that the chief has stipulated. And so those things are in writing in a part of their original bid package. Any additional discussion? Roll call?
Counselperson Zarita.
I just wanna, first of all, just commend before I vote, Madam Clerk, I just wanna commend the chief on that presentation he did, and spoke about his RFP without any hesitation or any stuttering, very confident. And I do wish we could get all four trucks and spend the four million, and if folks keep shopping and keep bringing in that Measure P money, maybe we can. So, and then, just before I take my vote, before I cast my vote, Mr. City Attorney, was everything, the process of the RFP followed, in your opinion, in legal process?
Yes, I've, I've spoken with the fire chief on several occasions over the last week, and he explained the prepayment discount, he explained the issues he brought before you, and I approve the item for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk? Yes. McCoy?
Yes.
Thank you, Chief.
Sharif?
Yes, thank you, Chief, great job.
Yes, thank you.
Your counsel comments?
Thank you, Councilwoman Zarita.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Really, really, very brief tonight, but, you know, my, my only concern tonight is, is to the city manager and to the L.A. County Sheriff's Department. It's very disturbing that the TP is still on Compton Boulevard. I mean, very disturbing. When I come out of Matheson, Paulson, if I come out Paulson, and I, in the morning, and I see the, the kids that walk to Davis Middle School, I see the kids that walk to Compton High, and you got this person living in this TP. It's, it's just so dangerous to me, I mean, you gotta really think about your kids that can get snatched into that TP, and like I said last week, their life will be ruined forever if they survive the attack, because it gotta be somewhat of an animal that lives like that. So I'm crying out to the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, to the city manager staff, to please have that person removed from that lot. I don't care what it is, I mean, the man's been there for a month. He's been there long enough to be put on notice, whether it's private property or not, it's no excuse, it's unacceptable. Unacceptable, I'm, I shiver when I drive by in a car.
Mr. City Attorney, is there something that we can do on the city's end? I understand that it is private property, but we still have codes and regulations, if, if we believe that there is a public safety concern?
Yes, we need, if I could take a look at enforcement file and efforts, we can bring that forward to a judge and see if we can get permission to go on the private property.
Thank you.
I mean, have, does anybody know if the property owner has been put on notice? I know for a fact that TP has been, the man has been living there for four weeks. I mean, even the city manager knows that the man has been living there for four weeks, has anything been done?
Yes, as a matter of fact.
I'm asking the city manager.
Oh, excuse me?
I'm asking the city manager, I, I'm asking the city manager, no disrespect, but I'm asking the city manager. Because, did you file anything?
Excuse me?
Did you file anything?
Councilwoman, I'm giving you the information because of the fact that the sheriff department have already been out there, and they are addressing this issue, and they're going out there tomorrow with the health department in order for them to address this issue.
Madam City Manager.
That's why I said.
Has anything been done?
Yes, we have contacted the sheriff's department, and they have explained to us the process. We do know that it is private property, and so in order to move forward, we need to work with the property owners, get their approval, and to go on their property and provide help or assistance to the gentleman that's made his home there. And that's the only way to move the individual and help him get help.
So how is it that the councilwoman knows that they're going in tomorrow and the city manager's office doesn't know?
Please, please, Councilwoman.
Because I, because I had been requesting information, I've been asking for information in regard to it, and that is in District Four, and that's why I know. I have spoken with Deputy McLeod, they assured me they were going out there tomorrow with the doctors and the mental, mental health people in order to address the issue. They talked to him to try to get him the service that he needs, so they can remove him, that's why I know.
Yeah, because I thought it was my district, so I called the city manager all up in here, but I found out it was Councilwoman Sharif's district. Doesn't matter, I've been asking for them to move him, because I'm, like you, it, it is disheartening to drive by every day. And when they were outside cooking, that was really a hazard, and I did call and report that they were out there cooking, so.
Right, and if you pass by at eight, ten minutes to eight, or, you know, quarter to eight in the morning, and you see the, all the kids walking to school, it's really alarming. So it just almost makes me wanna stop there and just start hunking my horn or something, you know? It's, it's not a pretty sight, so thank, thank you that somebody's going out, somebody's listening, and, you know, we, even though it's a, it's a global homeless issue right now, every time you turn on the news or every time you read a paper, it's something about homeless shelters and homeless people and homeless rights. But there still ought to be some enforcement that we can do on our Boulevard, because another sight that is just really alarming is the site that, that used to be the old county building on Compton Boulevard. I mean, that, it's like a, it's like a hotel, and it, there ought to be something that we can do. And even though we talk about districts, and yeah, I know that's not my district, but that's the Boulevard. And people don't, a lot of people that turn into Matheson, turn into Paulson off of Compton Boulevard, they don't realize that they, that this side of the street is a district, and this side of the street is a district. So when, when, at that, that old county building, when the people, I mean, it's just, it's really, I can't understand how so many people are just attracted to that place, I guess they got some shelter, and they got the little alley, and they got the little cut-ins, it's almost like a beach resort. It's hard to explain the sight of this place, but there ought to be something legally that we can do to keep our Boulevard safe, because it is a health, it's a health, a safety issue. It's a health and a safety issue, because you have, when you have homeless people, you have feces, you have disease, you have needles, you have drugs, and we need to keep our kids safe that are walking to school. And I drive down the street, and sometimes I say, "Can I turn my head?", and then I say, "No", "I gotta go home and go to sleep tonight, you know, I gotta go home and look at my daughter." But I'm not the only one that see this. And, you know, why our sheriffs don't drive by and say it's private property, they need to leave? I don't know if they can do that, if they can't, why our code enforcement don't pull up and say, "You on private property", "Is this your address?", you know, I don't really know the rules of what they can and cannot do, but I would really like to ask the sheriff's department to give a presentation on what are, what we can do. Can you pass that on to the captain for me, that, what we, what can and cannot be done, especially on the Boulevard? And, you know, I have two, and I'm gonna stop, this is my last statement. I have two pet peeves, I know anybody can be homeless, you know, sometimes I'm one paycheck from being homeless. I'm not downing the homeless people, but there has to be some safety precautions taken in place. My pet peeves is the walkway to school and the parks. And, you know, we really need to find out how to reinforce some laws to the homeless on the walkway to schools, on the boulevards, and the parks.
That's right.
Thank you.
Madam. Thank you, Councilwoman Zarita.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, I have the same concerns as anyone else here on this council in regards to the homeless. Unfortunately, the situation that we're in, I just had a homeless committee meeting last week, and right now, we are having some serious issues here, and it's just not at the City of Compton. You're talking about throughout this whole country, we're having issues. And, right, we are requesting and asking at the next COG meeting, which is tomorrow, to see whether or not this, not just the City of Compton, all these cities can come together and actually sit down and come up with some strategies, but start, also start teaching us and the council and elected officials what the issues are as far as, how we have to go about addressing this issue, because we do not understand what we're dealing with here, we, this is a serious, you know, a serious situation that we're dealing with. When you talk about the, the boulevards that we have, yes, Compton Boulevard, we have one there, like they said, right there at that park. Also there at our, right there on Long Beach Boulevard, nobody's, in one of our parks, our parks, they're in, in which, they are not being moved out of those parks, and those parks belong to the City of Compton. Now, this is private property, and I understand there's a process that we have to go through in order to address it, but like I said, they are going out tomorrow, they're bringing out the mental health people there to address this issue, because obviously there are some concerns here with the, the mental faculties of this person. And they're bringing the people out there to talk to them, to see how they can actually get them moved, get him moved out of that facility, moved away and possibly getting him into some type of facility that can actually help him as far as with his issues that he's dealing with. And those are the issues that we're dealing with, dealing with, like she said, we are dealing with drugs, and we are dealing with, but we, a lot of these people have mental challenges, and that is really, really devastating, because, as you know, we don't have a lot of mental facilities anymore in order for these people to even go into. So there's a, there's a, it's just a challenge that we're dealing with right now.
Thank you. Councilwoman, oh, yes, ma'am.
You know, I, I will say though, you know, I do give credit where credit is due. The gentleman that lived behind the, the Arco Gas Station in the alley by, right across from Willbrook Park, Willbrook Middle School on Elsie Gundo and Wilmington, somebody did displace him, so he's gone. He's been gone for two weeks now, but every time I drive by, I just kinda hold my breath, but he's, he's not back yet. He's been gone for almost two weeks now. And that was another issue with all the kids, you know, because you had three schools there. You had Willbrook, Magnier, and Centennial walking that way. So I'm just thankful that he was moved out, and I think the sheriffs had something to do with that. But, yeah, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCoy? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see him walk back in, I'm sorry, Councilwoman, Councilman Galvane. Thank you. He said no comments.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. First of all, Madam City Manager, would you please find out when the lights in Tragno Park will be replaced? Also, I was told that the timer is off, so the lights don't come in, come on until very late, and so please adjust the timer as well as, there are some lights in that park that are out, and I'd like to ask that they be replaced. On street sweeping days, I've had quite a few complaints that code enforcement is not going and giving tickets on the cars that don't move for street sweeping, so could you please talk to them or talk with the supervisor and let them know that they need to go out and ticket those cars that don't move for street sweeping? Especially, I got a call about one hundred and fifty-third and one hundred and fifty-second, that they are saying that the, their streets aren't being swept as well as no one is coming to ticket the cars in case the sweeper does come. And let's see, the only other thing, I attended, Cricket Association had an event on this past Saturday at Tucker Park, and I stopped by for the event, and it was a really nice event. I want to thank Mustafa and the Cricket Association for the event and for getting our children involved in cricket. Also, I went to, I was honored at Community Baptist Church for Women's Day. I want to thank them and the Deltas for just thinking of me and honoring me on that day. And I attended First United Methodist Church one hundred and fiftieth anniversary. It was a very well put together event, and I want to thank you for the invitation, First United Methodist Church. El Nido has a mentoring program, and they had a youth expo last week, during the week, on last Friday, and it, they'd had all different kind of entities there, as well as mentors and, and other people there to talk to children and the young teen mothers about the programs available to them, so. So thank you, El Nido, and keep up the good work. And I want to invite everyone out to my Compton Creek 5K Run that will be on this Saturday, beginning at 7:00 AM. We will gather at Centennial High School, which is 2601 North Central Avenue, and we will conclude at the Compton Gateway Center. So come on out and join us, get a little healthy, and we will, the first 100 people to register on Eventbrite or contact my liaison at 310-605-5612, they will receive a gift. The Compton City Clerk's Office is now offering passports services here in City Hall. If you're interested, please call the Compton City Clerk's Office at 605-5530 and make an appointment. It's definitely a blessing to be able to come in and get your passport done and your photo. And Community Sustainability Summit, one year anniversary, will be on Wednesday, May 23rd, at 8:30 AM, and it's at the NHS Center at 1051 West Rosecrans. A light breakfast and lunch, and panelists will be there for sponsorship opportunities. You can call the NHS Build Facility, and they will have a farmer's market on Saturday, May 19th, at 9:00 AM, right there at the same facility. And please come out on May 9th for the first part of the city's 130th birthday celebration. The grand opening of the youth baseball is on Wednesday, May 9th, at 5:30. And I think I heard you say it was at Gonzalez Park, is it Gonzalez Park? At Gonzalez Park. And let's see, I think that's all the messages, the notices that I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman McCoy. Councilwoman Sharif?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Thank you. I hosted our Business Roundtable last week at the Dollar High Community Center. Our guest speakers were Allison Phillips of Prime America, Constance Anderson, and Joseph Dunkin of Pacific Coast Regional Corporation Small Business Development Center. Kim McKenzie, Director of Career Link, presented eight businesses with the 2018 Annual Business Partnership Award. We had a great turnout again, over 70 businesses were present. And also, I want to just take a brief moment and read the letter that was sent out to them from my office. It says, "Please allow me to extend my utmost appreciation for joining us at the Business Roundtable meeting this week. We are very grateful that you have chosen to expand your interest in building your business activity in the city. The city cares about your ability to deliver community service and integrity and is working responsibly to maximize our responsive work productivity toward preserving economic efficiencies affecting food, shelter, health, and protection for our city's residents and visitors. Your presence at the Business Roundtable demonstrates your commitment to that aim of making available quality goods and services for the public who live, work, and play in the city of Compton." And also, I want to say happy birthday to Ms. Willie Mae Brown, 100 years young birthday. Ms. Brown, and Ms. Brown has been living in the city of Compton for over 50 years. Happy birthday, Ms. Willie Mae Brown. And to the city manager, I'd like an update on the success agency property in the Fourth District. I kinda, you know, that's okay, I'm sorry. I got some information earlier. But there are potholes, there's a pothole that need to be filled on Alondra and the 17 freeway going southbound. If you go onto the, get there, it's really, it's gonna take a lot for them to go out there and fix it, so they probably have to do a lot of collaboration there with Caltrans in order to try to get it done, so hopefully they can work with Caltrans and get that taken care of because it's really a bad situation. And weed abatement is needed. This is the city-owned property in the Gateway Town Center located behind the 24-hour fitness and marshals. The gazebo needs to be repaired, cleaned, and painted. And this is a question I really wanted to present to the city controller, maybe you can, I would like for her to provide an update on the bank reconciliations as to where we are, because I know once we was like really far behind, just really know how far we are as far as getting those things caught up. And I would like to also thank Mustafa, the Cricket Association, and the Key of Knowledge for the luncheon they had there this Saturday for all the cricket team in Kelly Park was definitely in the house. I really want to thank the students, and Mayor Brown came by, and I thank the students, they're really getting involved with cricket, they really, they're just trying to bring more awareness to the community about the game, and hopefully they can get more students to participate. So I really think it's a great thing to always make sure that we offer something new to our children so that they can be, they can be exposed to different things. So I'm looking forward to this really flourishing here in our community as far as that is concerned. And I would like to close in memory of Martha Villanueva, beloved member of city employee Enrique Benitez. The services, the vigil is going to be Thursday, May 10th, from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM, Inglewood Cemetery, 3801 West Manchester Boulevard there in Inglewood, California. The funeral services will be May 11th at 9:00 AM, Inglewood Cemetery, 3801 Manchester Boulevard. All condolences can be sent to Enrique Benitez. His address is 11222 Alvaro Street, Los Angeles, California 90059. And thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sharif. Just a couple of announcements, I'll be really brief. Had the opportunity to celebrate with United Methodist for their 150th anniversary, it was well attended, and for those that don't know, they are the oldest church in the city of Compton and almost one of the oldest in the state of California. And so they were founded, our councilwoman, of course, is a member there, as well as Judge Filer, and the original church used to actually physically be located on the site of the Compton Courthouse, and they moved the church and located it on Long Beach Boulevard. So it is definitely a pillar in Compton. A lot of great public servants have hailed from there, and it was an honor to be able to be a part of that very special tribute to their ministry. Also, on Sunday, I had the opportunity to celebrate with Victory Outreach. Councilman Galvain hosted, co-hosted, an event to celebrate their 10 years of ministry, and they had Victory Outreaches and their leaders from all across the region. Powerful message, powerful fellowship, and I know that the council was also in attendance to provide words and greetings from the city of Compton. Also, had the opportunity to participate and support the cricket program that's headed up by Compton Zone Mustafa and USC's cricket team. I know that Councilwoman Sharif was still there, I know Councilwoman McCoy was there earlier, and they're obviously were supported by the Key of Knowledge and other community organizations. So it's a great program, they've made a very significant investment in the city of Compton, and we look forward to continuing to support their efforts for exposure and opportunity for our kids. And just a quick reminder for Save the Day on Saturday, we have our annual prom dress giveaway and event for our young ladies here in the city of Compton. We have confirmed over 400 prom dresses that have been donated. There are also our shoes and jewelry and also handbags that are available. And then there'll also be raffling, free makeup and hair services for the special prom dates, so please come on out, everything is free. We'll be getting started at 9:00 AM, and this is made possible in partnership with the Positive Results Foundation, which they have been strong supporters of the city of Compton for quite some time. And so again, it's free, we can service over 400 young ladies, so please come on out, and we plan to be there to support. And I just want to identify one issue in terms of, just a reminder for city management, if we could also bring forward the code enforcement's presentation to the council. I know that we've been focusing on a couple of things, and we're off of our schedule for our different departments, but that's a really critical department that we need to get to as we prepare for the budget. And we'd like to be able to identify what their capacity is and also provide some direction from a policy standpoint on some quality of life issues that the council would like them to focus on. And Councilwoman Sarita already requested for the sheriffs to provide a report, but I think it's really critical that we have all of our public safety in unison as to what issues the council would like our public tax dollars expended on, which obviously are reflective of the needs of our taxpayers. And so that's really important moving forward. When we talk about issues, you know homelessness is a big issue right now, but human trafficking is still a big issue in the city of Compton, and we need to ensure that we're expending resources to address this public issue as well. And then also, just to reiterate that we can't get numb to public health and public safety issues. And I do recognize that, Compton, we're a tough city to serve, we have different issues, but we have to ensure that our law enforcement officers are not numb to the conditions that we are experiencing. And sometimes you can, you know, assume that, well, you know, there's homelessness, or there's human trafficking, or these things are normal, but we have to remember that we have to be strong in combating those items and not become complacent in that. And I have to support the comments made by my colleagues about more visibility of homelessness on our major thoroughfares. That is an impediment to business, it's a public safety issue. For all the issues that I won't repeat, my colleagues definitely hit those issues on the head, but we have to ensure that we use all of the policies and all of the enforcement and the latitude that we have as a city to ensure that these issues do not persist and grow to a deeper level. And so I'm going to ask that we coordinate a response and make sure that there is a set method of how we address certain issues. And I know that the city attorney's office plays an integral role in enforcing our public policies, and all the coordination has to occur between the city, the city attorney's office, public safety, which obviously consists of code enforcement and the sheriff's department. So if we need to resurrect a task force for certain issues so that we have a rapid response, we should do that because as far as I'm concerned, all of these property owners that are allowing their properties to go unmaintained, they've abandoned their property. And there are, there are rules and regulations in place that we can fine them, we can fine them a certain amount of money per day, and we need to ensure that we expend the resources on the city side to be able to enforce the laws that we currently have on the books. Because sometimes the response is that we need to bring forward another policy, well, 99% of the time, the city clerk and the attorney can attest to this, is that the policy's on the books, but we need resources to be able to have that enforcement. So I'm asking that we, the city management can provide just a white paper to the council as to what resources are needed to be able to enforce these public health and public safety issues that we have discussed on tonight.
Madam Mayor, may I interject?
Yes, ma'am.
Since you're asking for policies, I had intended to say that I would like the city manager to bring back an update on the policies and administrative controls that
Oh, yes, ma'am.
we're putting in place for our cash handling, as well as all of the, you know, all of the things that we're putting in place in the controller's office to make sure that we are handling everything appropriately.
Absolutely. And in support of that, I know that we had some discussion with our performance review with our city controller, and we raised some issues. And so I'd like those, just a report to be brought forward by the city controller in terms of the issues that the council has addressed and some corrective action measures, and who are the responsible parties required to enforce those corrective actions so that the council is well aware, the community is well aware, and we all know exactly what our roles and responsibilities are in alleviating these issues. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am, I am.
I would like to ask that we also close in memory of Gloria Alfreda Alvez, A-L-V-S, and she is a long-term time member of the Democratic Party.
Okay.
She's been around for years.
Oh, wow.
So we have our funeral services on Sunday, May 6th. The viewing would be Sunday, I'm sorry, Sunday, May 6th, from 2:00 PM to 4:00 at the Kingdom Life Christian Fellowship Church, formerly Holy Trinity Baptist Church in 1919 East Compton Boulevard. And that's where the viewing would take place on May 6th.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and we will now adjourn in the memory of Ms. Martha Villanueva and Ms. Gloria Valdez. May we have a motion?
Second.
Roll call.
Counselperson, Sarita?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes, Sharif.
Yes. Yes, thank you all, and good night.